Is everybody around here got to have their shot?
Everybody in the population is.
We're good tomorrow at 11:00.
Yep. Then you're at least 95% today, so.
Yeah.
Don doesn't spit a whole lot.
And so property assessors live in the offside. And it's we've never had a property assessor that doesn't know.
No, it's two weeks after you've had your second one.
Now, the younger people don't remember the deal.
Only reason I wear mine, the kids aren't invited. The kids, they say, "Dr. Fair, how come you don't get it? You have to wear mine, so that's why I wear here."
So made that deal.
Well, I think Johnny's office is the only office that doesn't rest.
Yeah.
And then nobody cares.
Well, you know, you used to, when you'd see those people come in.
And then we only run somebody that lives in the north.
I think he's done a fantastic job.
Eric, on the Anderson County Board of Education will come to work. Don, will you leave this to the pledge?
I think he has.
Don.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's going to read the resolution?
Mr. Myers will be doing that.
All right. This is a resolution, Anderson County Board of Education, a resolution honoring and recognizing Anderson County School Support Staff. Whereas our staff is made up of individuals who have shown a commitment to our schools and the students they serve, and whereas the support staff in Anderson County is an outstanding group of dedicated school employees such as SROs, school nurses, office staff, and teachers' assistants, who care deeply about the students and other staff members. And whereas the support staff provides services that support teaching, learning, and are essential to the operation of our schools and enhance the quality of our educational programs and services. And whereas members of our support staff also bring into our schools kind smiles, pleasant personalities, safety, and common sense. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby establishes April 8th, 2021, as Support Staff Appreciation Day in Anderson County Schools. And be it further resolved that the Board expresses appreciation and thanks to all support staff in our school system and encourages each school to recognize and join in the celebration of these outstanding individuals, adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elected Board of Education in Anderson County, Tennessee, at its meeting this eighth day of April 2021.
Johnson.
Thank you.
Move, we approve.
Second.
Move, second, we approve the resolution for the Anderson County School Support Staff. Let's give them a big hand, too.[216.26][216.26](APPLAUSE). I tell them I all were required to come to the meeting.[224.22][224.22](LAUGHING). Recognition of guests. Big nun.
Yeah. Hey, Johnny, do we have to vote on that resolution?
Yes.
Oh, well. You just went straight to the applause.
That's right.[245.61][245.61](LAUGHING). All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
A tree's a cut.
I didn't even.
Wholehearted and unanimously is what that was.
Well, I'd hate for somebody to vote no on that.[266.02][266.02](LAUGHING).
That would be bad.
No recognition of guest, persons to be heard, nobody to be heard, I understand.
Dr. Burr, we need to do the above and beyond award.
I'm sorry?
Above and beyond award.
Okay. Above and beyond awards.
Yep.
Nursing staff.
Ryan, Mr. Sutton is going to read our nursing staff, and then you all will read the other above and beyond.
These are names from all of the schools where we have nurses. Katrina Alstead, Lake City Middle School. Casey Brown, Clinton High School. Kayla Burris, Head Start. Courtney Carroll, Norwood Elementary School. Mariah Muncie Connell, CRCS. Tana Connor, CMS. Melissa Davis, CRCS. Glenda Duncan, Head Start. Angela England, Norris Middle School. Brittany Franklin, Claxton Elementary School. Chelsea Harry, Norwood Elementary School. Jessica Jordan, Clinton High School. Kayla Leach, Lake City Elementary School. Catherine Price, Central Office. Geneva Sawyer, Norwood Middle School. Angela Schroeder, Andersonville Elementary School. Alicia Summers, Anderson County High School. Susan Tipton, Dutch Valley Elementary School. Carson Turner, Bryceville Elementary School. Sheena Vow, Grand Oaks Elementary School. And Leslie Weaver, Fairview Elementary School.
Do we do Head Start?
Yeah.
Is that sir?
Yeah, Head Start was in there.
Okay, above and beyond awards for April 2021. Andy?
Tim Eckley, Andersonville Elementary School. Don Hopper, Vocational School.
And I have Paul Orstad at Anderson County High School and Claxton Elementary School, Brandon Ward.
From Clinton High School, Tammy Logan. And Clinton Middle School, Cara Beals. And from Clinch River Community School, Jenny Bruner.
I have from Dutch Valley Elementary School, Bobby Willis. From Fairview Elementary School, Danielle Baldwin.
And I have from Grand Oaks Elementary School, Joellen Frick. From Lake City Elementary School, Marshall Violet. And from Lake City Middle School, Melinda Reed.
From Norris Elementary School, I have Tina Lowe. And from Norris Middle School, I have Marlia Thurman.
From Norwood Elementary School, I have Eric Myers. Norwood Middle School is Miranda Bednar. Preschool is Amy Butcher.
I have from Central Office, Vicki Caraway. And Technology, Ryan Sutton.
And these, all of these people will be getting a check from our UTRUST account. That's money that you all set aside each money, so it's not money that comes out of the regular budget. And I'm like Dr. Burr, all of the people went above and beyond, but our nurses have really stepped up this year. They've done a tremendous job, and I can't say enough about when they did the vaccine and everything they've done, so each and every day.
I know several counties around us are still trying to give their vaccine, and our nurses and staff accomplished it in two days. That was outstanding, the way they carried it off. Approval of the agenda.
Dr. Burr, I would like to add something to the agenda tonight. The Head Start is requesting a no-cost extension request for the supplemental grant that is slated to end in May 31st. If we could add that to the agenda for the action items.
Without objection, we'll add it to the end of the action items.
Move, we approve as amended.
Second.
Move or approval of the agenda with above addition, discussion. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Move and second approval of consent agenda to any discussion. Is that the only in-school game we've had this?
So far, yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Executive approval, we had none again this month. Comments from the chair, we have none this month. Comments from the student board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As the school year is drawing to a close and end of course testing is coming up, our students have been doing a lot to end this year positively. So I have a few student shout-outs to make, and I didn't have names, but these are just a few success stories from the seniors and those in other classes. But scholarships, invitations to honors programs, and college acceptances continue to roll in for the class of 2021. A senior ROTC student this week did a presentation to sophomores and underclassmen about the importance of high ACT scores, good grades, those sorts of things. He was accepted to Carson Newman this year with $33,935 in scholarships, with the possibility of an additional ROTC scholarship. So his hard work with good grades and everything has certainly been paying off. He's a first-generation minority student who will go to private college for less than $5,000 a year, or maybe even free. So he has a lot going on for him, and we're very proud. Twelve students took a practice ACT test on April 7th and enjoyed pizza afterwards, but most of them were sophomores or people from the class of 2023. So we're very proud that they're getting a head start on their own futures and already starting to practice for the ACT. Just a couple other student moments. Our gear up coordinator, Ms. Merriman, recently met with a student who graduated in December from the 21st Century Program at Clinton High School. He's already started at TCAT as a dual enrollment student, so he's already working towards his technical school degree. And he's the first in his family to earn a high school diploma, and he's also the first to enter college. He struggled greatly in high school, but he's finding his way, and he's very committed to following the Tennessee Promise guidelines. Parents are also very committed. They're coming in and saying, even though we didn't finish high school, we want our kids to finish. We want our kids to end this year strong and have a good future. So we have very strong support at Clinton High School there. And just another exciting announcement, we have a bright future ahead for next year because we will be offering AP Spanish, AP Microeconomics, AP Government, and AP Human Geography, all new AP classes. This year, we have 43 students enrolled in AP classes, and 70 exams will be given to those students. In comparison to last year, where only 43 students were enrolled and only 29 took the test. So Clinton High School is on the way up, and we're very excited to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got some big things going on at AC this month. Like Kate said, we're starting EOC testing. So that's crazy to be saying that. This year has flown by, and that starts on the 21st, and it continues on that week. Also towards the end of this month is prom on Friday, April 30th, at Hunter Valley Farm. And I want to thank you guys for making that possible and giving us to go ahead to have a prom this year. So we're really excited about that. And other big news, with an emphasis on big, there's a new Jumbotron going in at the football stadium today. And that's news to me. I had no idea that was a thing until today, so that's awesome. We're really excited about that. May 7th, that afternoon, is the Senior Academic Signing Day. If you don't know what that is, that's where we have like banners with the names of different colleges on it, and seniors get to sign the banner of the college that they're going to. And if you guys would want to come out to that, that's May 7th in the afternoon, just to support some of our seniors that are doing some big things. Lastly, another big event is on April 16th, the Dell Leg Invitational. This is the 25th year that that's taken place. It's a huge track meet, and you guys are encouraged to come out to that as well on April 16th. And of course, we got baseball, and softball, and tennis, and soccer, all the AC spring sports are going on. We're excited about those as well. Thank you, guys.
Directors report.
Thank you, Dr. Burr. Just a few things to go over. Our school calendar has been approved, our school calendar has been approved by the state for next year. We're excited about that. We can, from what you all, if you approve that tonight, we can adjust the calendar, and it won't, we can, we can put that day in because students already have that holiday, and teachers are already off on that day, so it won't cause any, to make our calendar change any. Graduation, I just want to say a few things about graduation. As you know, for the past year or so, we've been working with the Clinton City about the football field at Clinton and trying to get that scheduled, and that's a long drawn-out process. So we have met three or four times with Clinton City and with Clinton High School and things like that. So we are going to have graduation on the football field at Clinton High School. That is the practice field. But we are going to make sure that it is a nice place. We're renting chairs, we're having stands brought in, we're renting those, we're purchasing some of those. The stage is going to be set up. It's going to be really nice. And I think there's some concerns. We've limited to six people per family. And, but I talked with Mr. Jenkins today, and there may be some families that don't bring six people, so we will be able to help the families that have those other things. But it doesn't mean that sports is more important than graduation, or graduation's more important. You know, at the football field, CUB has to put in a new sewer line under that. They've been, we've been putting them off. It takes a long time. Our bid doesn't open on that till tomorrow. So I just wanted to let the people out there know that we do take all those things into consideration, and we want to make, you know, it wasn't an option to do Thompson Bowlin Arena or any of those other places this year. So we really believe it's going to be nice, and I think Mr. Jenkins is also working with some people to maybe do some things downtown either before or after graduation. At Anderson County High School, we will be having it on the field at graduation. We don't have to limit the capacity there because there, because there is so many stadiums, and we're going to have to put out chairs and things like that. So I think graduation at those places is going to be a great thing, having it at our home school.
What are the dates again, please?
14th, 14th and 21st.
I don't have one with me right now. You put me, yeah, what are they?
14th and 21st. May 13th, at 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. will be CRCS's graduation. Innovation Academy will graduate following that at 7:30 p.m. in the Anderson County High School auditorium. Clinton High School will graduate on May 14th at 7:00 p.m. with rain delays on the 15th or 16th of May. Anderson County High School's graduation will be May 21st at 7:00 p.m. with rain delays on the 22nd or 23rd as well.
And then another good thing, Elizabeth Evans at Grand Oaks Elementary School, we just got the announcement today, she is the East Core Teacher of the Year. So that means out of all the teachers, there's eight different cores, so she's the top eight teacher in the state. So she will go on to the state, and we're hoping that she becomes the Teacher of the Year for the state of Tennessee.
That'd be awesome.
Yes, yes.[1118.01][1118.01](APPLAUSE). And it's been a long time. We've had, the last one we think we had was at Norris Elementary School, and I'm thinking it is our principal up there now, Renee Brown. For some reason, I'm thinking she was our Teacher of the Year and went on into the state. Our Catherine, our nurse manager, she's worked with a company, and we've purchased brand-new AEDs for all the schools. We've updated those. She actually got, where they give us $500 back for their old ones, and the other ones were like $1,000 apiece, which is about half price. And these are really, we don't have to change pads and have new pads bought every year. They're really, they've got a digital screen on them, and you can change it if it's a, if it's a child or if it's adult. You don't have to change the pad, so you can do things a whole lot easier, so we're excited about those things. Our camera systems, the system part of our cameras in all of our schools has been updated. Now our principals, our directors, they can, if something happens at the school, like Clay, something happens at night, he doesn't have to get up and go all the way to Grand Oaks. He can look at his phone, and he can look at that whole school and see it from his house. So we're, that's really a great, and working with our SROs to make sure that's accessible to them. I'm almost done with principal evaluations. I have one more, but really and truly been excited to what I've seen in the schools. Our teachers are doing an amazing job. Our principals are doing an amazing job. The schools look immaculate. They've done a good job of keeping them just clean and cafeterias and all those things. So that, that's really been, been a great thing. I'm also, I guess you, I'm excited. I guess that's the right word. I'm excited because we're going to be presenting a balanced budget tonight that has a 4% recurring raise in it, and that's for everybody. And, and you know, there's a lot of years we can't do that, and we can do that. And that's thanks to you all for, for the commitment you give to these students and these, all of the people that work for Anderson County Schools. So thank you for that. Another thing is, we have started an interview process for the Connect Academy at Clinton High School. That will start next year. We will start, as you know, the Connect Academy's not in ninth grade. We have the freshman academies do that. So we will start with 10th, and we may have some 11th graders that weren't in it, but we're going to leave our 12th graders right now. The plan is to leave them at Anderson County High School to finish that out, but we believe that is going to be a.
I think that's a smart move.
Yep. And, and so we're excited about those things. And then too, just to give you all an update, working with Michael Brady on, on a project for, there's a lot of projects going on. Me and Clay talk about them every day. You know, from the football field to a softball field, to locker rooms, to expanding at Norris Middle School, to making a different driveway up there and adding some parking spaces, to working really on a new school at Claxton. So we're going to be doing a lot of things, bringing you a lot of stuff over the next few months, but it's something that, it's not going to cost us to pull funds from other things. And I think that's one thing that is great about where our budget is. You know, sometimes we can put in these new projects, but we have to limit the number of teachers, or we can't buy band equipment or all those things. But the way we've done it, I think we'll be able to do all these projects and use our COVID money, really and truly be strategic with this COVID money, so it lasts for years to come. So I think we're in great shape. That's all I have, Dr. Burr.
Jim, is Catherine and the staff going to do instructions on the AEDs for all, all the teachers?
Yes, yes. We're planning, we're planning on doing that, and we're also planning on one thing Catherine's doing, because we've had some cases this year, we've had to use the AED, and we've had to use CPR, so she's working with our staff to get more people in our, in our school CPR trained.
You know, AEDs are simple to use if you've seen it done.
Yes.
But if you're, first time, it, it takes a little bit of thinking and everything. It walks you right through the thing. But everybody needs to be trained on it because the nurses may not be around when something happens.
Well, and Catherine had enough in her budget to buy one new one for every school, and, and when I met with her this morning, we really looked at, we've had, we had enough money in our other, in 499 other supplies and material to buy the other ones. There's about 15 others, because that was the one thing we didn't want to, is this the new AED or is this the old ADD? And you didn't want to have to train people on two of them, so that's the best way to do it.
Do we use the same one on elementary as high school?
Well, we.
Pads are different.
They were different.
Just different sized pads?
We had different pads. Now what we have to do with this one is you just turn a dial, it's actually a digital screen, and you just say what the child, if it's a child or an adult, and you don't have to change the pad. And so that will save us time, too.
Cool.
Is that it?
That's it.
Committee reports. Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee met Monday night and approved the following appropriations. 1A is to approve the salary increase, 2% raise retroactive to January 1. This will be in addition to the 2% that's in next year's budget, just so you know. This is 2% $926,796. 2B is the benefits for that, $157,250. 1C is to appropriate funds for assistance to preschool. This is a 2% raise there, non-grant money, $9,000. 1D is a decrease in allocation of Title 1A money, $21,243.53. That's a reduction in a grant. 1E is our Emergency Relief 2.0 Grant, $5,211,798.11. Those have all been approved by the Budget Committee, so I move for approval.
Second.
Move, second approval of appropriations 1A through 1E. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantress? Mr. Gillam Waters?
Aye.
And Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
And Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burr?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a long list of transfers. Let's see, 2A is to transfer funds for life insurance, $23,050. 2B is medical insurance, $141,000. 2C is to transfer funds for retirement benefits, $7,100. 2D is to transfer funds for rental costs and custodial supplies, $63,000. 2E is a vehicle for the Safety Director, $29,225. 2F is funds for two part-time educational assistants for online students, $4,508.63. GH and I are all transfers to square the local budget with the Nashville budget. So 2G is $23,019.85. H is $1,232. And I is $50,651.60. The rest are Head Start. 2J is funds for employee childcare, $62,036. 2K is to transfer funds to reflect childcare vouchers for the Companion Program, $91,000. L is clerical personnel and needs for the Companion, $9,186.73. 2M is funds for the 2% raise in retirement payouts, $13,276.20. 2N is benefits and supplies for the COVID grant, $17,977.80. 2O is early Head Start, 2% raise, and some nurses, additional nurses, $24,165.54. 2P is transfer funds for the USDA grant, $965.25. And 2R is to transfer salary needs for the pre-K salaries, $9,121.13. All the transfers have been approved by the Budget Committee, and I move for approval.
Second.
Move, second approval of appropriations 2A through 2R. Discussion. If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
We also approved the budgets for 2021 for 141 and 143 funds that were presented Monday night, and so we can send those across the street. Move, we approve those two budgets.
Second.
Motion made, second. We approve which two budgets?
141 and 143.
141 and 143. Discussion. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That is all from budget.
Policy Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Burr. The Policy Committee also met on Monday night, and we had four policies for discussion. The first one is School District Goals 1.700, and we had asked the Board Attorney to come and give us his feedback on this. And with that information, the Committee recommended approval on first reading, and I still move.
Second.
Move, second approval of Policy 1.700. Discussion. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
Our next policy was personnel goals, 5.100. And as, as, with the instructional goals that we just approved, this one addressed diversity, and this recommendation was made on the input from the Board Attorney, and I so move that we approve on first reading.
Second.
Move second approval of 5.100. Discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
Our next policy is interrogations and searches, and we pretty much, we discussed this and got input from other systems, and, as well as the Board Attorney, and we pretty much went back to our same policy. We wanted to make sure we included the use of animals and the use of metal detectors. And after much discussion, the committee recommended approval on first reading, and I so move.
Second.
Move second approval of the integration and search policy, 6.303. Discussion. This is first reading?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
Our next policy is medicines, and we have debated this one about three or four times. And finally, with much discussion and input from the Tennessee School Board Association, especially concerning the adrenaline insufficiency, we have suggested approval of 6.405 medicines on first reading, and I so move.
And, and Dr. Burrow, we did take that out, what you all asked us to take out, where it said that you could get volunteers now, it just says that director of schools shall make developed procedures and administration of the medication to treat the adrenaline insufficiency, doesn't say volunteers in there.
Took out the volunteer portion.
Second.
Move second approval of policy 6.405. Discussion. The only thing we need to, I think, if, if we have a patient, there's only been one in the state of Tennessee in the past five years. So, our chances of having one are very slim. But I think we, either in policy or in, in, in the board policy or in the procedure, we need to have the head nurse or the, or Dr. Parrott to contact the treating physician to find out what the proper treatment would be for adrenal crisis.
For that student, yep, I agree with that.
Would you, would you like to include that in our second reading?
Well, I, I think we need to decide whether we're going to put it in policy or in procedure.
I can, I can put it in procedures, and that way I can bring it back and let you look at it. That way, if we needed to change something that didn't work, you know...
You don't have to wait on two readings.
Yep.
Be a little simpler.
Yep.
Did I get a second on that?
Any other comment? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That's all for the Policy Committee.
Okay, Correction Committee.
The Correction Committee met to discuss the scholarship that the Board gives and to develop some criteria, and Dr. Parrott presented us with a, a list of things that the staff is going to do for each applicant, and then the Board has awarded 40 points. I, I don't know if that needs Board approval, but if it does, I move, we approve the list that Dr. Parrott gave us.
And we, we've actually updated it too, to show where the Board of Education has 40 points, to where they can put on there at any place.
Should we add that amendment to this proposal?
It's already on there.
It's already in there.
It's in there.
Oh, okay.
They just put it on the list.
Okay.
It's on the list, just, if you just approve that criteria sheet, score sheet, that'll take care of it.
Can I ask a question, this is me?
Second.
I just may be missing something. Won't that yield every sheet to have 100 points total?
Yes.
So, if everybody gets 100 points total, how does that differentiate between the students?
No, because what we're going to look at is if, if they have, if some of these things on our side, they may not have that.
So, so they don't automatically start with the 10, 10, 10, 10?
No, 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 no.
Okay, now I got you.
No, yes.
Because I was looking at, well, now everybody get 100.
We don't have to give 40.
And you don't have to get 40.
Now...
Yeah, you can give whatever you want to, and what we're going to do is, any, anybody that's under 50 points...
Doesn't get before us.
Yeah, doesn't get before you, so you'll, you'll automatically will pour those out.
What if there's a tie? You flip a coin?
Put them in a hat.
Yeah, put them in a hat. We'll say that the Dell Petro law firm will fund the other ones.
Take up for that.
Now, I have a question as well. You said the staff is going to do the 40 points, 60 points. Who makes up the staff?
Well, it, it'll probably be, it'll probably be...
That's the counselors.
It'll probably be, yeah, or me and Pam or somebody that will bring them over here and we'll take, we'll just go through them and do them. Because that's the thing, if you're not in a tech ed or you're not in an education major, you just lose 10 points. And if you're not, and, and the way you all told us is, if, if they don't have 95, if they've got 94, it's either, with us, it's going to be either 10 or 0. We're not going to say it's going to be a 6 or a 5 or something like that.
It's all or nothing.
Yeah, it's all or nothing with us, it's just flat out, and then you all decide the rest of it.
And they don't all have a teacher recommendation?
Right, right, so if they didn't have a teacher recommendation, we wouldn't.
Could we put all our 40 on one of those categories?
You could, whatever you wanted to.
Okay.
This doesn't take effect until next year.
Next year, yep.
So, we got plenty of time to...
Let's figure it out.
You know, the, the, it's funny, because Scott had said this, Aaron will go to college next year, and we've started looking at the prices, and when you get to that financial aid, you know, we don't qualify for any of the need-based financial aid, and it's, I'm thinking with the check I'm going to have to write, and I would go, I've got financial need right here. That's the next guy.
Yep. You lived on that. You don't get free bills.
No. It's a lot higher than what I live in college.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
The criteria and the second.
Yep.
Okay, other discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That's all from the Correction Committee.
More discussion on that than anything.
Action item.
Okay, the first one is, do you want to do these separate or together, Dr. Burrow, this funding application? It's the 2021-22 grantee and delegate COLA adjustment. Now, this does not mean that they're getting an additional cost of living raise, this, they fall within the, the same criteria that we do, and Oak Ridge follows their same school pay plan as well. And that's what this adjustment is for, this application. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the COLA adjustment for the grantees and the delegates as submitted.
Second.
Move second we approve the grantee and delegate COLA adjustments. Discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
The, the next one, Dr. Burrow, is we need to change the meeting dates for our committee from in May because of the graduation, so we're asking to go a, a day, a week earlier, so it would be Monday, May 3 would be for the committee meetings, and May 6 would be the board meeting. And then the other one in September, we'll need to move that date, the committee will need to do it one day, one way, because our board member is the night that the TSBA Fall District Meeting happens on. Usually that's on a Tuesday night too.
It's on the 20, why do we say 28?
It's on the 28th.
That's Labor Day weekend, so we don't have committee meetings on that day.
Okay, so we have it on Tuesday night, that's the reason.
So, it's not due to this Fall District Meeting, it's due to Labor Day, right?
Yeah, well, so, no, the late, it's on, yeah, it's on, it's on Tuesday, but our committee meetings will be on Tuesday because that's Labor Day.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's the reason we need to change it.
Okay. Do you need a motion on all that?
Yeah.
I, I move that we change the meeting dates for our May meeting and our September meeting as to May the, what I meant, move from Wednesday to May the 6th and May the 3rd, and also move our committee meeting to the day, would that be the day after Labor Day?
So, it'd need to be on Wednesday.
The Fall District Meeting that day as well.
Fall District Meeting's not till the 28th of September.
It's not till the 28th?
Yeah, it's what's on our little book.
It's what's in our little calendar.
So, maybe we don't, let's, let's do the one and we'll look at the other one, we got time.
Okay.
Just don't do anything with the...
So, we're just changing May?
Yep.
Okay, so there's your motion.
Second.
Motion is to change the first one, Dr. Burrow, the board meeting till the 6th and committee meetings till the 3rd.
You, you made the motion.
And like I said...
Then the second. Motion made second, we make the change of the dates of the May meeting. I, I'd like to announce, I won't be here that week, that week, we're having a family thing, and, but, I'm going to vote to change it anyway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
That's next month, isn't it?
Yep, yep. And the last one is the...
Two, we got two, we got the additional one.
Yes.
Got the calendar next.
It's the holiday schedule.
Yeah, the holidays.
Holiday calendar. Everybody got a copy, or you can read it off the screen.
The, if, if you want to make, somebody will have to make a...
Amendment?
Yes.
I move to add Martin Luther King Day.
Second.
Move second we approve the holiday schedule for 2021-22. Discussion.
And add Martin Luther King Day to it.
I'm sorry?
And add Martin Luther King Day to 200, for 260-day employees.
Okay. Did the maker of the motion and the maker of the, or the second of the motion agree with the, with the addition?
Yeah.
In case, in, in that case, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
There was one additional that you added to the...
Head start extension.
Head start extension.
And like I said, when I requested approval to change the agenda, the Anderson County Head Start program is requesting approval from the School Board for a no-cost extension of approximately $112,375.33 for the COVID-19 supplemental grant, which was slated to end on May 31st, but now they're requesting that it extends to 6/29/21. And the program will use these funds to continue to purchase COVID-related supplies and materials and offer the two-week summer enrichment program. And I would move that we approve this request.
Second.
Move second we approve the adjustment for Head Start budget.
COVID grant, yep.
Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries.
Yep.
Anything else? Any meetings to set or anything else?
Let's see.
Sure is simple.
Yep.
We're adjourned. What do you say?
That's that same old Williams that guy was working on.